...at seven o'clock and we're now going to start the March Planning Commission meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is denied in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. So, the first thing on the agenda after, the second thing on the agenda is the minutes of the February 4th, 2019 meeting. We have a very small correction to the minutes on page two. Presently, there's two motions that were recorded. The second motion, which presently reads "Motion to Reject" in bold, we're going to strike out the words "to reject." That was actually a motion to direct the staff to examine the present ordinance, referring to the lighting ordinance, I'm sorry, to our present zoning ordinance, to see if we can better address light pollution emanating from commercial and institutional properties, among other things. So, that's going to be that very small correction. Do I have a second to amend the minutes accordingly?
Who moved it? Who did the first? You? Who did the first?
Well, will somebody move to amend the minutes?
Second.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay. That's approved unanimously. The next order of business is the Jaguar Land Rover zoning hearing application. And...
Evening.
Would you explain to us what it's all about?
Sure. Nick Canali representing Jaguar. This was basically a land development plan, in addition to the rear of the building, that was filed a couple of months ago to this board for land development. It's basically being driven by Jaguar International, you know, the mothership, requiring certain renovations to all their dealerships. As a result, we filed a land development plan here because it was in addition to a commercial building. Staff came back to us and stated that we needed zoning relief on some of the parking requirements. As a result, we applied to the zoning hearing board for that relief. It was scheduled for last month, but since this board had not made any recommendations on the zoning relief, since it's a land development, it was kicked back here before we proceed to the zoning board the third Thursday of this month. So, basically, we're here for recommendations or lack of recommendations that you may want to make to the zoning hearing board regarding the zoning application. My understanding is, I don't think, we haven't gotten comments, so I assume it's a land development plan here for review, Amy Dino or Kevin?
That'll be next month for the land development.
So, really, we're just looking at the zoning application here this evening. And just to go through a little bit on what we have, and I would just go through a little bit of history as well. This is one of the exhibits that you may have in your packet. This is, Mike Smythe is here too, who's the owner of the dealership, I'm sorry.
Hang on just a minute so we can get that up on screen.
You may have this in your packet. This was marked as A-10 to the zoning application.
Here we go.
Yep, there you go.
What we're looking at on A-10?
So, this is, this is the Land Rover dealership. There's no additions to the front of the building. This is just a newer facade that we anticipate is going to be requested by the Jaguar International for this site. This does not show the addition. The next one, which is A-11...
Go ahead, Mike. Yeah. Hi, I'm Michael Smythe. I'm sorry to jump in. The signage is actually incorrect as you, currently, there's a stone wall sign, so the location is actually not correct on this rendering. So, it would actually remain in its same location as it currently is, and the way it's drawn in there, driven by the manufacturer, is a little bit larger than it is, and it's consistent in size and dimension with the current signage.
The current signage is A-4, I think.
Is that the way it's going to be? A-4, in the middle, in the center of the building, it looks like?
Yes. That will be the location, although the actual sign will fit with the facility requirements of Jaguar Land Rover North America.
Will it be within the standards of the ordinance, as far as size and square footage?
Is it going to be similar? If it's similar to that, I guess that would be like a monument sign, what we're looking at in A-4. And if it's going to be similar, then it would be within, as far as I know.
Well, they're going to have to go through the design, they're going to have to go in front of the design.
Yes. We'd have to go through the design review for both the facade of the building as well as any new sign.
Yeah, the monument sign in particular, yeah.
To show you, and then, what's been marked in the packet is A-11, and I believe this shows the addition to the rear of the building. Would that be right, Mike? And it basically is enclosing a certain area, and maybe, Mike, you just want to quickly tell the board where that enclosure is going to be and what the addition consists of.
The addition is really a requirement to have service customers drive in under a covered area, enclosed area. So, if you were to look at the rear of the building currently, you would look up and you would see a canopy that comes out, and you're enclosing that area and really squaring off the back of the building. Again...
Would you point to the addition on that photograph?
Yes. So, when you're looking at the drive-through, it's right here.
Is that light colored?
The light colored, yes. And then, the corner here, which is currently an area that is stoned in, in which we pull cars into, it's outside, but it's just continuing and wrapping around that corner, not really kind of changing any of the dimensions there, but squaring them off and bringing them into an interior location.
And what I would like to do too, is just to show you, we talked a little bit about this before the meeting started, regarding how this even got here. You may recall, and I'll try to outline for you, this was, was this Henry Paul Cadillac? Is that what it was, years ago?
Yes.
Me really dating myself on that one. But, I believe it was Henry Paul Cadillac, and it was this area here, where you see the parking and the inventory in the front of the building, the actual sales building was in the rear here. And what happened, and I know one member of the board, I believe, was on the zoning hearing board at the time, we came in and asked for an addition to this building here in the back for the dealership. The township said, you know, maybe we can do something better here. And that's where we came about putting the dealership in the front, facing Lancaster Avenue, so that's consistent kind of with the Wayne Business Associate, or the Wayne Business District now, the parking in the rear, and then the condominiums back here, the Pembroke North condominiums, 54 condominium units. So, what the township did was they re-zoned this back portion here to R6 to permit the condominiums, and then, this portion here is where the dealership is located, as you see in these other photographs, facing the front of the building with the parking in the rear. There were some other items that the township wanted from this site, and one of them was the sidewalk off of Lancaster Avenue. I think this board has heard it, and we've heard it throughout the township, about sidewalks in Lancaster Avenue and how close they are to Lancaster Avenue. One of the requests here was to move that sidewalk off of Lancaster Avenue to make it more windy, and as I mentioned, to put the parking in the rear of the building. And that's how this all started. We came, we, since the township amended their zoning code, we did not have to proceed to the zoning hearing board, and that was eventually withdrawn. And actually, I wasn't even certain myself, because it was probably 12 years ago, I checked the file in the township, and in fact, it was withdrawn, so there was no action ever taken by the zoning hearing board on the matter. We submitted a plan, a land development plan, and we had to go through land development with the township for the dealership, as well as the Pembroke North condominium units. And the parking requirement for this site was determined to be the other category. And back in 2006, the other category stated that was one per 1,000 square feet of gross lot area. As a result, we required to have 62 parking spaces. It really had nothing to do with the dealership, it just had to do the other category in the zoning code. That code was amended a couple of years ago to state that now it's one per 300 square feet. So, in effect, we have a nonconformity here as to the number of parking spaces. The nonconformity goes forward, but why we need this relief is because a result of renovations to the interior of the building, we lost some parking spaces. Mike can tell you about, really, the purpose of the parking on this site is for inventory. There is not that much customer parking. What happens in the morning if someone's dropping off for service? They drop the car off, they leave, they come back later on in the day. If people are coming to look at cars, generally, their busy time is on Saturdays, when in fact, there is really no service being done on Saturday. So, the parking kind of works out well, as far as this is all concerned, and it's never really a problem for customers coming to this site. You saw in the application, and I'll show you on 7A. Just to orient yourselves again, here's the building, here's the parking in the rear. We're adding by right parking in this area, and Brendan, might you step up, just in case I misstate something, you can correct me. By right parking in this area, this row of parking, 30, 31 spaces, is also permitted, nine and a half by 20. The issue is, we're stacking these spaces back here. So, by stacking, we mean they don't have free access to an aisle way or a driveway. So, as a result, we're asking for relief in order to stack these vehicles. This back row is never used for customer parking. This back row is only used for inventory. As any dealership, you like to have some inventory on this site, so when people come and look at the cars, you can actually show them the different models and different makes that you may have. So, we have stacked parking in the rear here. We have by, or not by right, but by right legally zoning requirements, nine and a half, 20 spaces here. I believe on this side of this site, we have, is it two legal and two smaller?
There are four spaces there, but two of them would be considered legal.
And on this area here, I believe they're also a little smaller. This is existing parking that was approved back in 2005, 2006, and it was approved despite the fact that, there's no question, it'll be picked up, I'm sure, by the consultants that these aisle, that this aisle here is definitely narrow. It doesn't meet the current code requirements, not from a zoning stand, standpoint, but from a saldo standpoint, as to required aisle width. We still don't have any parking in the front yard, as the township always wanted us not to have. We do have some inside parking, just like we had last time. The township gave us credit for, I believe, there was a number of indoor parking spaces, and I believe we may have it, 23? We've now reduced that number to 13 indoor. So, again, we still have the 62 parking spaces, but the fact of the matter is, some of them are not nine and a half by 20 township code, and as I mentioned, these back here are stacked parking spaces in that they do not have free access to an aisle. So, we are going to zoning hearing board, asking for relief on the fact that we don't have the free access, we don't have an aisle for the stacked parking, and that some of the spaces are less than nine and a half by 20. So, that's why we're proceeding to the zoning hearing board.
Nick, how wide is that drive? Can a fire truck or any, that type of, or...
It's approximately 13 feet from the building to the edge of the space, which is the way it is currently. So, if we were to make the spaces comply, then that would further reduce that aisle width.
But can service vehicles come in that way, or if they have to get up that way, can they get that way if there's cars parked in there? Or is that an issue?
It's really not an issue. I will, and if I could, just to go back and recall a little history here, because I was before the board back when we presented, at the time, there was consideration that we could move out of the township and utilize this location for other brands, and we really wanted to stay in Wayne, we really wanted to stay in the township, and we really wanted to work with the township to develop the plan that would work with the township, which at that time, improving Lancaster Avenue and the visual effects. So, you know, obviously, we could have pulled the building even closer up front, because there was originally a variance for that, but the design of the sidewalk, the streetscape, improving that to make it look township-friendly, and certainly, the landscaping along this side, all kind of erred on the side of being aesthetically pleasing within the township. So, the building, I think, accomplished that. Certainly, at the time, we did have the relief of variances at that particular time, but those were actually, you know, when we came back in with the redesign, we had to go back to the original, you know, plans, I guess, that we had. But that's kind of a little bit of the background there with what took place.
Yeah, and I guess Charlie, to your question, is this was, these six spaces here are the original space that were on the original plan. That has not changed in that area. Really, the big change here, even though back then, we also had these stacked spaces, but we met the parking requirements, so we didn't have to count them, and we didn't count them. Now, we do have to count them, so that's why we're requesting the relief.
So, we have had emergency vehicles that have had to access the property, and they're coming through the main drive to the back of the building without any problems. So, we've had EMT vehicles and people that have fallen, in which we've requested help, and there has never been a problem in which there hasn't been any accessibility prevented due to size limitations.
Can you continue to do that now? Because your parking is changing in the back. So, how do they pull through now?
Well, right now, this corner piece right now is a, there's a pier where you see that box. So, in terms of this limitation, certainly, there's still the ability to come in through the drive, and I don't, Brendan, you might have to jump in and talk about the exact size there, but, you know...
You refer, emergency vehicles?
Yes.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if the fire truck would get back to this area, but they would be able to get into this area here by going in and then backing in, so that way, they would be able to back, to drive out as well.
Have to move the cars to get them in, like, they'd have to come across the handicap parking area and all the car spots to be able to get their vehicle in, so there's no changes to the curb cuts?
There are no curbs through here.
Okay.
This is all, this is all concrete above, a structure below. This dashed line here represents the lower level below the building.
No, I understand. I just wanted to make sure, like, the parking that you've moved, originally, you had a little passageway right through behind the building, and now, you've got parking there. So, if a fire truck had to come in, the cars would be moved?
Correct.
And they would be able to pull in that way?
Correct.
But they would not be able to turn around or go to any other area of the building?
Whichever way they came in, they'd have to back, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
There are no impediments in that area.
Can you tell me, like, with your current design right now, where parking is for your customers on Saturday, for example, as well as your employees?
This is the old plan? That's the original, okay. This is the original plan from 2006.
So, while I'd say, the area that you're looking at, there's a real management process that takes place, whether it's the weekends or whether we're operating during the day. But we operate with two valets that are on-site, on the lot at all times. So, their primary purpose is to make the dealership and the ease of parking customer-friendly. So, we are, we also have the ability to move cars and employees to an off-site location and valet them back to the dealership. So, we kind of transform the dealership throughout the day, depending upon the time and what's happening at that particular time. So, PAC is my general manager on-site, and he goes through the process, starting at seven o'clock in the morning, in which we're moving vehicles and, you know, preparing the site, making it customer-friendly. So, we have staffed up in a manner that enables us to do that and just becomes part of our daily operation.
Where do your, where do your employees park?
Many of them park off-site. There is over...
At Burkhardt's old place?
Yeah. Burkett Oil.
Hey, Nick.
We have valet staff that shuttles them back and forth.
Basically, what relief are you going to ask zoning for relative to, from what's there now to what you need to do?
Sure.
Those two proposed pieces, the one on the left and one on the right?
Go ahead, Brendan, why don't you?
And you're going to lose three parking spaces, right? Is that, is that the deal?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the last part?
No, we're not losing any, no. We don't lose any parking spaces. I think we have the same number. I think it's still 62 and 62?
No, it says 67 against 62.
Oh, six...
Existing 67.
Yeah, the existing six, yeah, that was more than...
67 spaces that are straight currently.
And you're going down to 62?
Correct.
So, you're going to five spaces.
Correct, which meets the original code that the building was.
Now, what I want to know is, what's there now as opposed to what you anticipate putting there, the relief that you're looking for to do that? And, you know...
Yeah, shout to the...
And what's going to be the hardship that you're going to say you need? That's, that's...
But indicate, I guess...
Of the 62 spaces, there are 26 legal spaces.
Yeah, but you've already been, you've already, you've already got that. You already grandfathered, or whatever you want to call it, into those 67 spaces, okay? You make a change of those 67 spaces, you could potentially lose your grandfather clause. So, you got to come up with a reason why you're going to come down five spaces, and what the handicap is to you, or the hardship to you to do that.
As...
Because Jaguar requires you to do it, isn't it necessarily, as Nick knows, a handicap, a hardship for us?
Although, it is a modernization of the premises, which has been considered as hardships previously, you know, by the courts. So, really, it has to do with modernization more than anything else, and the requirement to modernize, and the fact that it's, that site itself is very constrained as to making the parking requirements work, particularly since...
Yeah, but you already have that, Nick. I mean, you already got the relief for that when they let you build it 12 years ago, or whenever you were in front of us before. So, I'm not questioning what's there. What's there is there, and it's working for you, and it's working for the township, and that's okay. What you got, what you want to do now is add two pieces to the building, one on the left and one on the right, one on the east and one on the west, okay? And when you do that, you're going to lose five parking spaces. So, you got to tell, you know, you can explain to us, but you're going to have to tell the zoning board why you want to do that.
Let me just explain one thing before. Back in, back in 2006, this was approved for 62 spaces. So, actually, I believe it was restripped to add those five additional spaces, which is what the plan currently shows. So, the saldo and the land development plan, the land development plan back in 2006 does show 62 parking spaces. So, we're not reducing that, but I understand, I understand what you're coming up with.
I understand what you're saying, that it was, but I'm sure back then, the deal was, you know, we're going to do 62, but if you give it to us, we're really only going to do 67. So, you kind of got, you kind of got a piece of the cookie because you were going to add five spaces. Now, you're coming, and you want the cookie back.
No, we always said it was going to be 62. Yeah, I think that was, I think that was later on. I don't even know when the five spaces were added.
Like I said, I kind of remember you guys being in there, and I was trying to figure out what the relief was that we gave you, because I know we gave you something.
Yeah, I don't think, as I said, I don't think we ever proceeded. I checked, I mean, I did go back.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember. I just remember, I remember you're in there, and that's when, you know, we went through the whole thing of spot, spot zoning where the condos are, because it used to be a Ford dealer, I think, and before that, it was a steel mill was up there.
Right, exactly. Iron Works, that's where the name comes from.
It was never a steel mill. I can verify that, since I worked there one summer.
Was it Iron Works? Is that what it was? Was Iron Works?
They built, they built folding partitions for rooms, and they built outdoor stands. It's just, it was, they would take steel and cut it up, and they also made folding basketball stands for gyms and whatnot.
So, really, Charlie, to answer your question, what, you know, our request for relief would have to do with is the need to modernize, and as a result of modernization and the constraints of the lot, therefore, we need the relief on the size of the parking spaces. We're not really reducing the number of parking spaces. It's still 62, which is what the original saldo requirement was. And again, I didn't remember what happened with the zoning too. That's why, last week, I went back and pulled the file and saw that we never proceeded with any relief, because by that point, the township came in and modified the code to make both of these uses, the condominium use and the car dealership use permitted by right under the code itself.
If I may add something. It really is a, it's a difficult situation, because it really is a requirement by the manufacturer. So, without, without meeting facility requirements, we do not have a viable business, and that's proven. All of our dollars come from backend dollars that are the requirement of the manufacturer that we must hit in order to have a viable business. So, if you take those dollars out, we are operationally not profitable. So, we take, in the township, a very thriving business that has done very well within the community, supporting the community, and we remove that. So, what becomes an alternative at that point in time? So, you depart from building, I think, what is a different design, but certainly, a more contemporary and something that I think is a real capital investment in this project, which is, I don't know the exact budget, they're still working on it, but it will be a three and a half million dollar investment roughly in the facility. And certainly, it does look very, very nice. While it's a change for me, it will be that capital investment that I think keeps the township looking relevant, looking good. When you look at parking, while I understand the changes, we look at the business models, and a lot of models show with what is happening in the retail environment, you are seeing, you've gone from, the last time I went before the board, where we saw the average consumer visit a dealership roughly 4.5 times, to now, customers showing up one time, if you make the sale. You're seeing the movement towards remote service that will be taking place. So, we see real challenges and real changes that will impact the dealership in a positive way from a parking standpoint. So, there are a number of things to consider. One is the fact that I don't know what the hardship or what the legal ramifications are, but certainly, we have a very good business that I think is a good fit in the township. We are by right zoned as an automotive agency. You don't want this to end up being a used car dealership or a Kia dealership. I think there is a lot of considerations, easily, the five spots could have been, could have, if we moved the building closer to the street, if we made some of those changes up front. We did not do that. We did not do that, and...
That's all history. I mean, we're here with the situation with right now. So let's focus on that, please.
Could you trace the drive-through for the customer? You said they, you're putting up a new canopy?
Yes, this, this part that shuts out is the service drop-off. So they will come in, drop the car off, and then I believe an employee would then drive the car underground?
Correct.
At that point?
Correct.
So the building size is nearly, if you could show the footprint of, the shop is significantly larger than this...
If you follow this dashed line around, it's a large box underground. That's the footprint of the basement level.
Which, which line is that?
It's this dashed line that goes around. It kind of gets lost in here, but it holds this corner here, and then it follows this flush curved line.
Same direction, but you're going to say it's a square.
Yeah, they come out. They have a traffic light?
Traffic light, so it's red or yellow?
What, this plan that you're showing, the new one, is much better organized. I'm looking at the aerial view of your current lot, and it's a little chaotic, and this seems a little much, much easier to kind of navigate and find your way about.
Any other questions from members? Any statements or observations from staff?
No, I think that, as Nick had alluded to, that the land development plan had one set of parking calculations shown on it. Then the ordinance changed, and I would agree with Charlie, that the ordinance changed, and to some degree, what was required previously, they had provided a surplus. That surplus is no longer a surplus, it's a non-conformity, and they're reducing it, which is why, if you look at zoning hearing board application, one of the last sentences is regarding the number of off-street required parking spaces. So I think that that was something that, in the early stages of this, when it came to our attention, we identified as relief being needed for that. So ultimately, this body gets to make a recommendation in its analysis of this application for consideration to the zoning hearing board.
Can I have a motion by any member on, of the board regarding either approval or non-approval?
I would move that we approve it. I think that it's, he's not really making that big, a big change. Although I think, I think the zoning board is going to extract some flesh from them, I just don't know how much. So I think they need to be ready for that, but I think that we should approve it. I think what he's doing is, and like the gentleman said, it does, it is really a nice, a nice building on the Pike. It adds to our township, so I'm, I would move that we accept the plan as stipulated.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the carries unanimously. Thank you. So, moving right along, we have some new business that I'd like to discuss with the, with the board, with the commissioners. And that is this.
You have no old business?
Is there any old business? And obviously, there wasn't any public comments, since the public seems to have been smart enough to stay home. So, the Minnesota Valley's Planning Code, Section 207, requires that the planning commission keep a full record of its business and shall annually make a written report by March 1st of each year of its activities to the governing body, which is, in this case, the commissioners. So this is something that has not been done in the past, but it is a requirement, and I am going to request the staff to put together that report. It does not have to be extensive.
For 2018?
For 2018, yes. And it would be, it would cover January 1 to December 31st. Does not have to be extensive, it can be just pretty much a list of what we have reviewed during that year. Subdivision land developments, planning modules, ordinances, any other items that might be of importance...
Can we just take the minutes?
That we, that we reviewed, and they can certainly consult the minutes in putting together the report. In fact, I would think that would be a good starting point.
I'm not so sure they couldn't just put all of those...
Yeah, just compile the minutes.
And use that as the report. I think, I think that's asking a lot of them. I think maybe we should say that, to kind of do something for 2019 on, but to go back into 2018, I think, is a bit much. I think if you just took the minutes and made like a folder, a little book, and then gave it to them, is what we did.
Charlie, every now and then, we request counsel or staff to do a memorandum, and then we hand that memorandum over to BOC. I think those memorandums should be part of that report.
Yes, yes. Whatever, whatever...
Because that's beyond the minutes.
Whatever's written, whatever either the staff wrote, a memorandum or the minutes into a book and giving it to them, I think more than that, at this stage of the game, would not be fair to you guys. Now, I'm sure Mary's got something to say about this.
It's not that I do or don't have something to say, but I have an example in front of me of a, of a report that another planning commission provided to their governing body. And it's all of about three pages long. It's divided into, like, recommendations that they make on subdivisions, recommendations that they make on conditional use applications, and it just has a list of the plan, the date of the recommendation, and whether or not they approved it, like, recommended, like, denial.
Well, that's exactly what I was proposing.
And so we're, so we're talking about a report that would be less than, less than five pages.
I think what we would end up doing, and Steve and Trish can work on this, they'll be reviewing the minutes, would be start with the agendas. Obviously, if it's something that this body is undertaking for review, it would be listed on the agenda. So that would be pretty much the starting point for creating that list of the activities that this body has looked at, and then going from there, and then can work with the chairman to see if there's other information that he would like to provide on that.
All's I'm saying is, I think that's something we should be doing for 2019, okay? Because it's only March, we've only met a couple times. I think it would be burdensome to go all the way back to 2018 and start there. And I can't imagine, I don't know which township...
The problem is, it's a code requirement, and we're aware of it.
Well, there's a few of those things that we, as a planning commission, are supposed to be doing, but they're all supposed to tie together, like, we've got to update our plan. And I mean, I look at the purpose of these annual reports as if they're guiding us or providing some guidance, or the result of having a plan in place, which ours is more than 10 years old. And so if we're going to do this, maybe we should do it for a purpose and not just have one more thing to do. So either we use the information to make, update the plan, or we, I don't know, I just don't want to do it in vain.
I'm just smiling. It's a statutory requirement. Full stop. Now, we can blow it off if you want, and start with 2019, but that's...
I didn't say that. I said, what you should do for 2018 is take all the minutes and any, anything that, like Kevin said, and that's, that's for 2018, instead of trying to go back and have them research all that for 2018. But, but do it for 2019 the way it should be done. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying blow it off. I'm just saying, you know, we learn about it in March of 2019, that this is something we should have been doing over the last 2,700 years. You know, you can't, I don't think it's, in my opinion, all right? And with my opinion and 25 cents, you can't buy coffee anymore. But that, that's what I think. I just think that. It's a bit much. I think just putting any memorandums that we wrote and the minutes in a folder and give it to them and then step up the plan.
Let staff take a stab at something, and we'll get it to the chairman and see if that will suffice.
Thank you. Also, under new business, I guess, I guess this falls under new business, but Elizabeth brought up the fact that we haven't redone our comprehensive plan in more than 10 years, and I think you said that it's supposed to be done or revised at least every 10 years, is that right?
Yes, and the board just approved that to move forward at their last board meeting.
Yeah, they did.
I don't think they let us know. Did they want us to be involved?
Can we actually get a copy of it? I've never seen that plan.
It's available online.
Is it on the website?
I just heard the tale, and the commissioners have done what?
At the last board meeting, the board of commissioners talked about updating the comp plan and had earmarked money set aside for that. I think they were going to start working on the budget to make sure that could happen. Were you, I thought you were, no, you weren't there. Did you review it, or you, you disagree with what I'm saying?
It's in, it's in question.
Okay, we were asked to prepare proposals, so I assumed it was...
Well, my impression then is that the commissioners are taking care of this, and that if they want us involved, and I guess I think we should be involved, they will send it down to us?
We are aware of the need to update the comprehensive plan. We are working through the budget process to see where that can be done.
Okay.
It's been something that we've been trying to work on for a little bit now.
Very good, thank you.